All right, let's go ahead and get this meeting called to order. First, is there a motion to accept or modify the agenda?
Madam Chair, I'd like to certify the closed session.
Oh, sorry. Already heard, done that. First, can we come on a flip page?
According to the votes reported by the clerk, the school board of Warren County does hereby certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed in the closed meeting in which the certification applies; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, Madam Chair.
Can you do a roll call, Mr. Valentine?
Mrs. Salins?
Aye.
Mr. Rinaldi?
Aye.
Madam Chair?
Aye.
Mrs. Lo?
Aye.
Dr. Funk?
Aye.
Thank you. Now we can get started, apologize for that. First, is there a motion to accept or modify our agenda?
I would like to make a motion to modify the agenda with the addition of action item I, which would be adding the Harley &amp; Hire scholarship.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, perfect. Moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Great. Moving on to our action agenda. First is going to be community participation, and the way that we'll do it is each action item, we'll talk about that action item, and then if someone's here to speak on that action item, then we'll have you come up at that time. So with community participation, it is the duty of the chairperson of the school board with assistance from the county sheriff as necessary to conduct the meeting in an orderly manner and to limit discussion to topics relevant to the issue before the board for consideration. Persons addressing the school board are advised to limit their remarks to those relevant to the pending items. No persons in attendance shall be allowed to voice remarks except as recognized by the chairperson or the clerk of the board after audibly stating their name and whom they represent if applicable. No person shall bring into the boardroom any sign, banner, or other such item which would interfere with other members of the public in seeing, hearing, or otherwise participating in the meeting, provided that models, photos, maps, charts, drawings, and other such demonstrative materials intended for use in a presentation by a specific person shall be permitted. Upon recognition by the chair or the clerk of the board, the speaker shall address the school board chair, combine their comments to issues of public concern relating to the operation of Warren County Public Schools, refrain from words or statements which from their usual construction and common acceptance are defamatory to specific individuals or tend to violence or breach of the peace, refrain from obscenity and vulgarity, stay within the allotted time, stop speaking when directed by the chairperson. Groups or individuals in the audience creating an atmosphere detrimental to or disturbing the orderly conduct of the meeting will be asked to refrain from such conduct once. Any additional disturbance after the warning will not be tolerated, and the chairperson will ask the county sheriff to remove the individual, group, or clear the boardroom so that the board can conduct the business of the school division. When recognized, please state your name for the record, whether you are a county resident, parent, a Warren County public school student, or an employee of the school division, and limit your comments to three minutes. And the first item that we'll talk about this evening is the purchase of leveled literacy intervention materials, and that's Ms. Bragg, is she here?
I'm just...
Okay, perfect. Ms. Rudesell, thank you.
We are asking approval this evening to purchase additional leveled literacy intervention kits for all elementary schools and brighter futures. The Fantasium Penel leveled literacy intervention system is an intensive, small-group supplementary literacy intervention for students who find reading a challenge. The goal of LLI is to lift the literacy achievement of students who are not achieving grade-level expectations in reading. LLI was implemented at all elementary schools this year. It was used to support struggling readers and address the needs related to reading gaps that resulted from the pandemic's impact on learning. Schools have requested the purchase of additional LLI kits to support more students in the coming school year, and, in the case of Hilda J. Barber, who has used the program for many years, to also update and replace worn materials. Do you have any questions?
Are there questions for Ms. Rudesell?
I'd ask questions in advance, and that is satisfied.
Okay. Is there a motion? Oh, I'm s... Did anyone from the public want to comment on this? Okay. And nobody wrote to you, Mr. Valentine?
No, no one signed up or wrote.
Okay. Great, thank you. Okay, hearing none, is there a motion on this?
I move that the board approve the purchase of leveled literacy intervention materials for all elementary schools and brighter futures in the amount of $96,117.12.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, Madam Chair.
Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you, Ms. Rudesell.
Thank you.
Next up is going to be the Blue Ridge Technical Center membrane roof replacement. Mr. Lewis.
Evening, Madam Chair, members of board. This evening, I've got two items to bring for your consideration and approval. The first is the membrane roof replacement at the Blue Ridge Technical Center, another one of our roofing systems that's well beyond its useful life, and multiple weeks over the years, multiple repairs, and they're always going to continue to pop back up until that roof is replaced. Staff, we posted an invitation for bid in late March. We had our pre-bid meeting early April, April 13th, with eight contractors in attendance, and let me back up just a bit. The bids were posted, the invitations for bid were posted on the State of Virginia's Eva procurement site and the school division's website, so that correlates to how many contractors showed up for the pre-bid meeting, which eight contractors showing up was very good attendance. Bids were due and received on April 29th with five proposals received. Blackstone Roofing was the low bidder, and I believe you have the bid tabulation sheet at $343,600. Now, a piece of that is what we call an alternate item to replace some of the corroded steel roof decking. So Blackstone's roofing price was $1,600 for that and $342,000 for the actual membrane replacement. So looking at right now, tentative schedule, pending board approval, and receipt of the building permit, project could start early to mid-June and be completed within four to six weeks, weather permitting. So...
Do you all have any questions? Yeah, we just got your updates to the building committee. How's already?
Well, I think the one thing you were saying at the building committee meeting was that we got really lucky that this company already has the materials in stock, so we don't have to wait.
Correct. And in fact, several of the bidders did not submit a proposal because it could not get confirmation to delivery of the materials, specifically the tapered insulation which goes under the membrane. They said their suppliers, manufacturers, couldn't get it to them. This contractor has the material, all materials in hand, slated for another project, not ours, that wasn't time-sensitive, so there's no lead time issues with getting this project started.
Any other questions for us? Is there any public comment on this? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Yes, Madam... I'll go ahead, Melanie, go ahead.
I move that approval be given to award contract Blackstone Roofing LLC in the amount of $343,600 contingent on appropriation of funding from the Warren County Board of Supervisors. I further move that the superintendent be authorized to request funding for the project from the board supervisors.
I'll second.
Okay, perfect. Any more discussion? Nope. All right. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Great, thank you. Mr. Lewis, again, purchase of two John Deere zero-turn mowers.
Thank you. You've probably heard the talk that, you know, the school division will assume responsibility for the grounds maintenance at the high schools beginning this July with the new fiscal year. We are in need of two new zero-turn mowers to be used at those high schools. We did provide the county with equipment, I believe it was four zero-turn mowers. Three of those four are approaching their useful life as far as number of years. They were eight to 10 years old. One was fairly new, and I understand that's had an engine replaced, but the, one of the main reasons we need the additional zero-turn mowers is because the county, up until April of next year, will continue to maintain our, the middle and the elementary schools. So that, they need that equipment to continue that maintenance at those schools, and that's the reason we need ours. The existing equipment, again, was provided to county when they assumed the responsibility, they'll continue to use it. We plan to purchase this equipment utilizing a State of Virginia grounds maintenance equipment contract. There are several out there, several manufacturers. John Deere offers the largest discount of 23% to school divisions off the list price. Toro was second closest, but I couldn't get a call back from a Toro representative, so my recommendation is we purchase the zero-turn mowers through the contract with John Deere, and it's the dealership out of Winchester, Virginia. Any questions?
Are these available now, or would we be waiting?
Yes, and that's the beauty. They are, they were slated for delivery to this dealer as general sales in mid-June. If we were to purchase, our name physically goes on order, and it actually gets accelerated, hopefully by two weeks. So we would have these by one July to begin service.
And they're convenient for service?
Yeah, the dealer is New Virginia Tractor. They own six or seven John Deere dealerships, Winchester, Percival, Lord, I don't know, Warrenton, Virginia, and there's several more that they own. So, and that's one of the reasons, because of so many dealers, parts availability, and even service, if we needed them to service it, it would be a lot faster for us. Again, part of the groundskeeping, as you know, we went out for bid twice for groundskeeping services, and the second bid, we revised the scope slightly, reduced the frequency, we pinpointed it instead of every seven to 10 days, every 10 days. And then two, we allow contractors to bid by site, so they gave us a unit price per school. So if we had a contractor that only wanted to bid two or three in hopes of attracting smaller contractors, we would have that capability. But, you know, for now, the county's going to take care of the middle and the elementary schools, so this kind of plays in. You know, we have that unit pricing per occurrence in case I need a backup for the high schools. We'll have planned and unplanned absences with employees. You know, it's just going to happen, so we have to have a contingency there to be able to keep the grass, keep the maintenance going.
Any additional questions for Mr. Lewis? Anybody want to participate from the public? Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'll do that. I move that the approval be given to award the purchase of two John Deere zero-turn mowers in the amount of $27,903.26 to New Virginia Tractor of Winchester, Virginia.
Is there a second? A second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the third reading. This is the VSPA Revised Policy GCL Professional Staff Development to reflect the statutory requirement. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, and good evening. This is the third reading of the policy dealing with professional staff development. Every employee holding a license issued by the Board of Education is required to complete cultural competency training in accordance with guidance issued by the Board of Education, at least every two years. Each employee is required to complete the training at least once prior to the start of the 2022-2023 school year. This was a July 2021 policy revision of the approved May 2021 GCL policy. Staff has communicated with VDOE representatives this past week. A module is, has been, let me back up. A module or the training itself was created under the former governor, and then when our new governor came into office, he directed the superintendent of schools to look at this module and revise and so forth, and then release. It has been revised, it has not been released, although I was told by VDOE at the end of last week that it should be released within the next week or so. Okay, so I don't know what or so really truly means, to be perfectly honest, but, and then I actually called the licensure department at VDOE. And I want to, I want to clear up something that I think has been a little bit confusing, perhaps even on my part in those type of things, is really there, there's a cultural competency requirement for licensure as well as part of the teacher evaluation that is given to us by the state. So we had said earlier that there is a requirement for licensure, and that, that is true. The requirement for licensure will come out in this module that's presented, that's been revised by the governor's office. That itself is what it is. It is the training that anyone holding a license has to complete, very similar to that of CPR, AED, first aid, or dyslexia awareness module, or child abuse and neglect training module. The other part where a school division would have flexibility is that as far as for the teacher evaluation part, that our professional development program could have more, we can add more to that training of which the Department of Ed has created for licensure. I did ask the licensure director if the training that is required for licensure, is it just for licensure, or could it also be used for the training and the professional development that a school division could provide to meet the requirement for training? And the answer is yes. So for licensure, what will come out in a week or two, that's what they have to have for licensure. But for any type of training that we would like to do beyond that, we're allowed to do to meet the requirement for the professional development part. So there is a licensure part, and there is just a teacher evaluation part. And then you may ask, because I asked this, or I asked it of myself, is that if you're evaluating a teacher, what would be some of the things that you would be looking for on something, cultural competency and those type of things? And I kind of draw myself to almost like Blue Ridge Tech Center, because these are some situations that we have had in the past, and that years ago, and perhaps these numbers are still the same today, I didn't, I didn't run class lists today and those type of things, but I know some time ago in our auto mechanics class and those type of things, we had quite a few females who were taking that class. And that statistically could be an area of which it could be a more male-dominated profession within society and those type of things, but we had a very solid enrollment of females in that. So a cultural competency thing there could simply be, as a teacher is presenting the materials and those type of things, and perhaps that you may refer to a, I don't say popular mechanics like the magazine, but someone who's very popular as a mechanic, or someone who possibly could be like a scientist and those type of things, to make sure that when you draw upon these people who are leaders in their profession, that perhaps you're also doing the same for a female as well as for a male. You may be giving an example of someone in that field and those type of things who's a female, rather than just always presenting leaders and so forth who just, who may be just male. So that's an example of just how you're just using diversity and just culture in general to, in your lessons and those type of things, to, to show just cultural competency. That was one that really came to my mind, because at that time, and I'm sure now that our teacher who's teaching that, but Mr. Little at that time, years ago, who taught that class and those type of things, you know, did a super job of going out to recruit as many students for his class from all walks of life and those type of things, and was reflected in his classroom. So that's really the information that I have. It is a policy that, that we're required to have in our professional development. There was a question that came up earlier in regards to different type of programs that could be, that were created, and VCU and Radford had created a pilot program of a cultural competency training. It was one of the very few, if the only perhaps, that was out during that particular time. It was a pilot program. It was open to all educators, it's not a requirement. I asked the VDOE if that particular course is required for this requirement, and they said no, the only one that will be required is the one that, that VDOE will put out through the licensure program. I know that was a pilot program. I'm sure it grew, and I'm sure it has grown, but it's not, VDOE did endorse that program as, as one that they would accept for the training, but not take the place of what is required for the licensure.
I feel like I'm just going to clarify for myself what you've already said a bunch of times, but when we were at our previous work session, it was thrown out that, you know, we as Warren County could perhaps do our own module, but now it seems like you've clarified that the bare minimum module will be whatever VDOE puts out.
For licensure, we don't have a, we don't, we... That is the model. It's like the AED, CPR, first aid, that, that's just their module. When we get into the train, if we get into anything, we want to go beyond that, then that's something that we, we can create as a division, we can use other examples, we can use other modules that perhaps we create, but when it comes to licensure, I think we were unclear previously that that is something that we could create, but the licensure department, Ms. Maggie Clemmons, who's the director of licensure, had said that that's the requirement for license, and she also had said that that module itself would meet Virginia Department of Education's requirement for staff development for cultural competency.
Because if, when they get their initial licensure or renewal, they have, they will have to do the module.
Right.
But then they have to also have the training, I'm asking for clarification, every two years after that.
That's correct.
So essentially, a person could renew this year for 10 years for their licensure, for their license, would do that, but then the county is responsible for that every two-year training? And is that what you're saying? You could use that module?
We could still use that module, they could still use that module every two years, because that module itself, just like the other modules that we use for the other training, could easily change. They, they would be updating that and those type of things.
Is that what you're saying, the county can use that module, or as a county, you can choose to do something?
That is correct for professional development for your teachers, but that doesn't, but for licensure, for the licensure itself, it is the, it is the module of what the license department says that you use.
But they still have to continue it every two years in order to get their license renewed?
Yes.
Which is what I was looking at, was from the state, and so what they're saying here, they give us framework that we have to follow. They said we can write our own, but we have to follow their framework, which has the four different main sections, followed by the micro sections, as they call them, and that's where I think the devil's going to be in the details, but, I mean, really, all of this is a moot point, because they haven't released the module yet.
Right, we don't know that the module...
Right, so we've had first reading, second reading, and third reading, and they still have the module, but they want us to vote on it.
Yeah, and originally, this was to be in place back in July. As I mentioned before, this was when we did the May 2021 policy changes. We approved those policies, and there was a change in this particular policy. I almost think it was more of just like a reference-type stuff. And then in July, this came out as, to include in this particular policy, professional development and those type of things based upon cultural competency.
And it started back in 2019 with the executive order from Governor Northam. So I mean, they've certainly had their time, and I know that that is in no way on you whatsoever.
I appreciate that, and it's frustrating for, for us as well.
So the modular for licensing is equal to your pro-development, your professional development?
You can use it for both. According to the licensure specialist, you can use that for both. You can use it, it can, you definitely have, you have to have it for your license, I mean, that's just, and then you can also use that as already developed professional development for cultural competency training.
So in year one, for your license renewal, you could use the modular. What about year two, when, when professional development comes in, you could use the same module?
You could use the same, because most, what's going to end up happening, most likely, as all the other modules that you have to do for your license, there's a handful of those, they're updated, some aren't updated, because certain things just may not change. Well, I was going to say like CPR, AED, but CPR actually has changed over the year, how many different type of things, but in general, some things don't take a change. There's one that's the child abuse and neglect recognition training and those type of things. Some of the policies or some of the codes and so forth that are sent out, it may affect that training, like some, maybe some timelines of when you have to report certain things and those type of things. So yes, you can use this for both if a division chooses to use this for their professional development. You don't have a choice for the licensure part, this is what they say that you have to have, but, but you can develop something in addition for your professional development part if you like.
So just help me get this straight. The state modular for licensing is something that we have no say in approval or disapproval, whatever?
Correct.
But the pro-development, professional development is something we do have a say?
Yes, we just have to meet, there's a set of like guidelines and so forth that we would have to meet, so with our professional development staff, we would take those guidelines and we would create, if we, if we chose to do this, if, if we chose to create our own, we just have to stay within those guidelines, and we would have to create whatever that, it wouldn't necessarily be a mod, a module, I mean, it could just be an in-service, it could be a class, it could be, you could partner with a particular college, university, you could create your own, you just have to follow within their guidelines.
So, Mr. Smith, I'm still a little foggy on this, I'm sorry.
Rob, can I share this?
Huh?
Am I allowed to share? The way they have it mapped out just makes it really clear. So, okay, so they have each of these different modules right here, and then they have these micro things, and so they are saying self-reflection is the first one, so you have to examine yourself for racial bias, and continually examine your lived experiences, and from here we go on to the, to all these different ones of the micro breakdowns, then we've got this number three with the cultural competent learning environment, which means they're going to instruct the teachers that they're going to teach differently from the large idea of doing it monthly, doing the community training, is that we're going to redevelop the teachers and how they teach.
So, okay, I think I got it now.
And then number four, that's why I said it's so controversial, and then number four is the community engagement.
So what we're voting on with this policy would be just passing a policy that your state requires, but we're not deciding...
You're just passing a policy that's...
We're not deciding right now.
No, you're not deciding right now what you're going to...
We can still do that, we can change it every year.
It's just the fact that teachers have to have it, it has to be inside our professional development, it just needs to be in policy. You know, you're, you're just putting the plans for the house in place, you're not building the house tonight. I mean, you're just, you're just, that's simply, I mean, it's, it's, it's a requirement, and we just need to have it in our professional development, and then we, we go from there.
Okay, and it is a big piece of the teacher evaluation and administrative evaluation, so they've added another section to all of those evaluations.
And this hasn't even been approved yet, or sent to us yet?
As far as...
The module.
The module.
The module. They haven't created a D-module.
So why are we even, why are we even going to make a motion on that?
Because the state is telling us that we have to.
The state also said we have to, but we're not deciding on the training right now. We can still make decisions about...
We can still make decisions about the training. The part that we have discretion over, we can still make our decisions about that later, but the state says we have to put this in our policy.
Right now, though, today, the law doesn't say that it has to be approved today.
Right, but they would need to do the training before the next lawyer starts.
But if they, if the state makes the law to require a training, but the state has had since the executive order in 2019 the right, and they haven't written it, then they can't, the teachers can't take a training that doesn't yet exist, so.
They didn't create the training, right?
No, they have not.
Well, there's nothing ready to go, though.
There's nothing.
They revised, they revised the original training, and whether that original training was in the form of a module, I'm uncertain of that.
Okay.
But I know that it is now in the form of a module with the revisions that's been put in place by the current governor's office, and that they said that that would be released within a week or so, and I don't know what or so, how long that means in the world of the state, but.
Yeah, and the VDOE promised me before the end of May, so, I mean, I intend to hold it to that, so.
But regardless of what's in it, we still have to do this.
I, no, we could, we could write our, we could write our own.
We can still write our own.
I, I mean, I don't vote for things, I don't read first. I'm not going to impose on our teachers, hey, we're going to, Warren County, like right now is the state. State's the bad guy. State's the one that's telling these teachers, you have to take this training, and you have to take it every two years, which notably, as we discussed this morning, this training, at least my understanding from what we discussed, is more frequent than any other training requirement, right? So.
Every two years.
Every two years. So, that's not like the norm. That's, the idea, even in reading this, is to retrain teachers as to how to teach these children. And the state put this requirement out there. The state hasn't finished their homework in time. So, for the state to then expect us to jump on that bandwagon as the county and say, hey, teachers, I know that this module doesn't even exist yet, but we as the Warren County School Board, we're just going to go ahead and vote this thing right on in, and I don't think that really does much to support our, our teaching staff, whereas what I would rather do is, number one, I'd like to table it, seeing as we've had three readings on something that we can't even actually read to vote on. I don't vote on things I can't read. But number two, to have us as a school board show support for our teachers as a united front to say, hey, teachers, we understand that the state has put you in a predicament here. The state has required something of you, and then they haven't finished their module on time. So, we have your back on this. We will stand firm until the state releases that module. Then we as a board will do our due diligence. We will do the training first. We'll see what's in it, and from there, we will vote. And if you haven't had enough time to do this before the start of school, we're willing to go to bat for you and ask for, until January, to allow you to have this sufficient time to do this training or what have you. But I think that this is a step-by-step thing, and we're, we're putting the cart before the horse by, by taking a vote on something that we can't even read yet, especially when it is such a controversial topic. I mean.
So you're willing to disregard the state law and allow our teachers to lose their licensure?
The state is disregarding their own policy and not having their work done in time.
Well, the state bosses that we have to pass this.
The state law does not say we have to pass this today. The state law does not say that we have to pass this today.
I'm just saying, we're going to have to pass it sooner or later, so what's the difference?
The difference is we will be reading what we're voting on.
I mean, I understand you want to take this stand, but it's not going to make a difference.
The difference is we will be reading what we're voting on.
We are reading what we're voting on.
We are not reading what we're voting on. There is clearly still.
We're not seeing the module, is what you mean.
Correct. There is still clearly confusion over this. Until you get into the, to the devil of the details in all this, it's.
I get what you're saying. I wish the state had passed this law and didn't require us to do this. Like, I agree with you on that. I'm just saying.
No, I have to break to the Virginia Department of.
It's not up to us. They said we have to pass this.
I have to break.
There will be some things that we have to say over.
Yeah, and I have to.
It's not going to change if we wait a month or five.
Well, I was told by Adria Merritt from VDOE, she promised me that we would have this by the end of May. That puts our next meeting after it will have been released. Now, granted, they released on the very last day of May. I can't promise that we'll all have time to do the training before, you know, within three days, but we would certainly have time to have done it before the next work session. We deserve to read, we owe it to not only our teachers and to our constituents, but we read what we vote on. I would never, I mean, this is how bad government happens, is they create a policy to tell you, you have to do this. You don't get to see what it is you're going to actually vote in place, but you have to do this. Well, I don't live off of I have to's. I, I say that that is bad government. That is how we have found ourselves historically in numerous situations of following bad leadership just because we have to, and I'm not willing to do it.
So I think in the interest of hopefully just moving along from this, can we all reach a compromise that at our work session in June, that's an additional two weeks from when we think that they're going to have it? If everyone's more comfortable seeing the module, can we table it until that work session?
I definitely would feel.
Is everybody in agreement to do that?
I mean, it's.
I would like to take that, obviously.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
I don't know if we need to have a special motion on that, or if we can just say we want it on the June work session.
So they can do it by consensus unless there's objection.
Does anyone object to just waiting until the June work session? I don't have a calendar, but whatever that is. Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Smith, thank you for.
I guess I should ask, is there any public comment on this? Because this was technically going to be an action item. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Approval of one-time bonus for full-time and part-time employees of the Warren County School Board, Dr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In recognition and appreciation of the many challenges our employees have faced this school year, and as an incentive for their, for them to continue their careers with Warren County Public Schools, it is recommended that a one-time bonus be given to all full-time and part-time employees. If approved, the bonuses would be paid in June of '22. Full-time employees as of May 31, 2022 would receive a net take-home payment of $1,500, and part-time employees as of May 31, 2022, a net payment of $750. The total estimate cost of these payments is $1,908,452. For employees hired on or after January 1, the payment would be one-half of the approved amount.
Are there any questions for Dr. Ballinger? Is there any?
So, so one of the things to make this happen, of course, with, and of course, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ballintine, but in, in the instruction side, because of staff turnover or vacancies, we were seeing a surplus there. So, one of the things that we have to do, and also just to balance out for the end of the year, in our categories, you know, we would have to take those funds. You would have to approve it, then it would have to go to the Board of Supervisors to approve for those funds to be transferred to make these, these bonuses available. And I do want to mention that these bonuses are for every employee except one. So, you know, those, everybody would receive those, the bonus.
Is there any public comment? Any questions for Dr. Ballinger?
And the, the one employee that wouldn't get it is yourself, correct?
Correct.
That's what I thought, okay.
Is there a motion?
I think I can do that one. Madam Chair, I move that the approval be given for a one-time bonus payment to all full-time and part-time Warren County School Board employees as of May 31, 2022. Full-time employees are to receive a net payment of $1,500, and part-time employees a net payment of $750. Employees hired on or after January 1, 2022 will receive a net payment of one-half of the approved amount. This approval is contingent upon the Board of Supervisors approving the necessary transfer of funds between categories in order for the school board to execute this payment.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any additional discussion? All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you.
All right.
Approval to request the Board of Supervisors transfer funds between budget categories, Dr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm going to actually defer to Mr. Ballintine. He is our guru in this area here, so I will kind of start off, but then turn this over to him. When the Warren County School Board of Supervisors approved the FY '22 school operating budget, the appropriation was made by budget category versus lump sum. As the year has progressed, and actual costs have been incurred, it is necessary to request that the appropriated amounts for several categories to be adjusted to reflect actual cost incurred. Also, the primary, preliminary due to, due to the inability to fill a number of positions during the school year, lag pay, savings from when an employee leaves and a replacement is hired, and staff turnover savings. There are savings in the current budget that, if approved, would allow for an employee bonus, the purchase of level literacy intervention kits in elementary schools, at elementary schools of brighter futures, and the purchase of two mowers for the high schools in order to accomplish these initiatives. Approval, approval, the request of transfer of funds is required. That's okay, sorry. That's okay. So, I'll let Mr. Ballintine speak, if you have any questions.
Well, as Dr. Ballinger mentioned, this year, our budget is, has been appropriated by category, major category, everything from instruction, administration, attendance and health, pupil transportation, operations and maintenance, facilities, debt service, technology, and then a contingency reserve line. And as we said, as the year developed, and particularly with savings in the personnel areas where we weren't able to fill certain positions because of a lack of candidates, and also staff turnover, and the fact that sometime when a person leaves and that a replacement comes in, there's a lag between those two, and, and a savings there. So there are those savings, and what we've asked, what's being asked here is to make the transfers that are outlined in the motion, the dollar amounts between the different categories. So everything will balance out, and in doing so, will allow us to do the bonus that you just, or contingently approved, and also to purchase the LLI materials, textbooks that we talked, that were just mentioned, as well as the two mowers that Mr. Livace talked to you about. This is sort of a evening up of the money. There's no additional funding being requested from the state, from federal funds or from local funds. It's more or less a bookkeeping move to move the money into the right categories, so we do not overspend any category, even though we won't overspend our total budget.
Got you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Ballintine or Dr. Ballinger on this? Anyone like to speak from the public? Is there a motion?
I'll read it for you. I'll do it for you. Madam Chair, oops, let me get this off of here. I move that the superintendent be authorized to request that the Warren County Board of Supervisors approve the following FY '22 operating fund category transfers. $275,000 from category 61,000, instruction, to category 62,000, administrative attendance and health. $325,000 from category 6100, instruction, to category 64,000, operations and maintenance. $32,791 from category 6100, instruction, to category 68,000, technology. I think I read 61,000 wrong. I said 6100, so I'm going to back up to $32,791 from category 61,000, instruction, to category 68,000, technology, and $87,209 from category 69,000, contingency reserve, to category 68,000, technology.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion on this? Good job. All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no? Thank you. All right, next up, we have approval of Lymanton United Methodist Scholarship. Dr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Lymanton United Methodist Church would like to offer a $2,500 scholarship to graduating seniors at Warren County High School and Skyline High School to attend LFCC. One scholarship will be awarded per school. Funds will be available year to year. Must attend Lord Fairfax Community College, soon to be Laurel Ridge Community College. Students must maintain a 3.0 GPA and must be a student in need due to financial hardships. So, they would like to start offering those as funds are available.
Any questions on this? Any comments from the public? Is there a motion?
I move that the board approve the Lymanton United Methodist Church scholarship with gratitude.
Second? Second. Any discussion? All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no? Okay, thank you. All right. We had one last-minute action item added this evening, and that's going to be the addition of the Harley &amp; Hire Scholarship Fund. Dr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Reaching out now is honored to announce the creation of the Harley &amp; Hire Scholarship Program to support and encourage student athletes in Warren County Public Schools. These awards will be made for the '21-'22 academic year through our endowment program. Harley Hire was a student in the 2024 graduating class of Skyline High School. She played right field and was a catcher for the Skyline High School varsity softball team. Harley loved sports, excelled to them, but she also had a servant's heart. Harley had the most community service hours and the Reaching Out Now Girl of Destiny Leadership Program where she was a member. She loved God, was also a student member of Abundant Life Church Youth Ministry, Crave. The principal aim of the scholarship program is to offer financial support to current senior student athletes at Warren County High School and Skyline High School, and to encourage serious and deserving students to continue their studies after graduation. The focus on student athletes has been selected in recognition of Harley's love for the game of softball. The scholarship award would be $500 for each school, one at Skyline, one at Warren County. Use of scholarship may be applied toward tuition, fees, or other costs directly related to the student's post-secondary education. So, I would ask that the board accept this scholarship with gratitude as well.
Any comments from the public? Is there a motion?
I move that the board approve the Harley &amp; Hire Scholarship with gratitude.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion? All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no? Thank you. Okay, moving on to our work session. This is going to be IGA-R instructional priority objectives.
All right. So, as, as everybody knows, we've been working with our committees over the past few months to look at our grading policy. That policy is actual instructional priority objectives. That's the actual name of it, but everybody calls it the grading policy or the 50 policy or, or there's probably a lot of names for this policy, but the, the true name is instructional priority objectives. And so I spent time with, with three different committees, meeting various days throughout the week, or throughout the month, for about a couple of months, and we tried to limit our times to an hour. All those were after-school meetings with, with each of the groups, and we, we were able to really, I think, put out a decent product that, that the teachers are proud of, that they like. And I did send this out to my principals to, to share this at their schools. So far, I've only had a couple of responses from, from a couple of principals, as far as from getting feedback from, from staff, but they were to have those meetings with their staff, talk about the policy. I encouraged principals to use the committee members that served on the committee to help in presenting the policy and to answer the questions of why. in presenting the policy and to answer the questions of why? Why was this put in? Why was this left out? Because they had the knowledge of, since being and serving on the committee. So, just to kind of run through this instructional priorities objective, really, the biggest changes started occurring on the first page under number two. But all three committees wanted to leave the breakdown between the categories, between summative seventy percent and formative thirty percent. We also decided that we needed some definitions. What is summative? So, at elementary, at middle, and at high school, they use different terms. Elementary, they like to use tests and quizzes. At middle school, they like to use independent, but at high school, they want to use summative. So, we all decided, okay, we're going to put summative as, here's our definition for summative. And so, it includes all of those terms for families, so that they're not confused as far as when they hear teachers talk about tests or quizzes, independent student work. We listed some of those things, and those are summative. That defines summative for us. Then, on the next page, we also define formative. You know, again, elementary likes to use classwork, homework. Middle school likes to use supported, and that's where the teacher supports the student. You know, it's not independent work, this is supported work. So, and again, when it comes to high school, they like to still use formative. So, we let formative in there, but again, define what is formative, and how those terms can be used interchangeably throughout our school, but under the definition and heading of formative. One thing that we did also add within this policy was the term no credit. And so, we thought we needed to define what is no credit. No credit means receiving a zero or no credit for that assignment. You know, all three committees felt that it was important to define that, that what does no credit mean? Well, no credit means you're not getting anything. But we needed to make sure that students, parents, teachers, everybody understood that no credit means no credit, which is a zero. So, they felt that we needed to put that in there. Then, when you look here, we have, moving on down, actually, it's kind of broke out. You'll see elementary, middle school, and high school, and this is kind of where each of the subcommittees got a little bit different when it came to their suggestions. So, at the elementary, these two paragraphs, basically, the formative and summative, are total rewrites of elementary. They wanted to really look at, okay, yes, we understand that elementary, it's our job, and this is their mindset, it's our job to make sure that these students get their assignments done. We're not going to penalize a student for, you know, I'm going to make sure, and then the elementary teachers were great, you know, they said, I'm going to make sure when that student misses, when they come in, they're going to take that test. You know, that's our job to make sure they get that done. But when it comes to other assignments, as far as with the formative or their homework assignments, they said, okay, we'll give an aye. That way, the parent can see that aye, that it's missing. If we're having a hard time getting that homework, or those other assignments, those daily assignments, or something made up, just a cue to the parent, hey, this is setting out there. And so, then they said that they would give until the end of the quarter, and then the aye would be changed to an F. So, now, if you're towards the end of the quarter, say you're in week eight, then they will extend a little bit, you know. There's going to be some give on there, just to make sure that those students are taken care of. When it comes to the summative, again, they're going to put the aye in there, but the teachers, all of the teachers on that committee said, those students will make up their summative assignment. Point blank, it's going to be made up. We'll put this, that we're going to put an aye in there until it's made up. We'll also put that by a certain time, if it's not made up, it too will be, you know, receive a grade of an F when it comes to that. But there should not be any of those issues when it comes to our elementary students, simply because the teachers are going to make sure it's there. Now, we move into middle school, and you start seeing some different language, some different verbiage when it comes to what middle school was wanting to put in. And so, they start off, and these are kind of total rewrites for middle school, because it was kind of just lumped in, there was no real section that defined middle school. But when you look at middle school, students missing a summative or formative assignment, the assignment will be marked as missing or incomplete in Power School, and a zero will be assigned for the grade until the assignment has been completed. So, one of the things in Power School that really confuses parents, students, is that if a teacher doesn't put, and I may call on Lisa to make sure I'm talking about this right, or maybe Jess, she's back there, but when they put some, if they don't put a value in Power School, it doesn't calculate it in the overall grade. So, it looks like if a student is missing ten assignments, and there's not a value placed in that assignment, then it looks like that grade is setting here at a B. But if you put those ten assignments in there that were not completed, it drops it to a, you know, it drops it or raises it. So, okay, they're both shaking their eyes, so I'm on the right track there. And so, we don't want to give a misperception of your child is doing great, but you have ten missing assignments, which, if those assignments are not turned in, could affect your overall grade. Now, throughout, and I kind of skipped this when I started talking about this, the whole objective of adjusting this grading policy was to really, truly understand what the student knows. So, if a student doesn't turn in an assignment, or if a student doesn't take a test, how can the teacher say they know that material? They can't. So, we really need to make sure that our students have an understanding of the material so that we can put our stamp, yes, they understand it. And that was really what drove all of this, and that was our underlying theme, of how can we make sure that students have complete understanding of the content, that they have the knowledge of the content, and they can move on. Looking again at middle school, when it comes to this grading policy, students will be allowed to make up, retake, and/or correct material for summative assignments at least once for full credit. Students will be given until the week before the end of the quarter for make-up, retake, or test corrections. Regarding the retake, the higher of the two grades will be taken. So, and this is kind of uniform at middle school. They kind of wanted to keep it the same at both middle schools. They didn't want to have flexibility. You'll see some flexibility at the high school in this policy, but you don't see flexibility at the elementary, and you will not see flexibility at the middle school, because they wanted both schools to be doing the same thing. When you look at the formative, again, assignments are due at the due date, credit will be given for assignments that are attempted. No credit will be awarded for any assignment that, assignments that are not attempted. So, that means if a student doesn't do an assignment, they're not going to automatically get a fifty. They will receive no credit if that assignment is not completed. Now, you go back up, is that a summative assignment, or is that a formative assignment? So, again, if it's a homework, and that's a formative assignment, they don't do that, that's only thirty percent of the overall grade. Now, if that's a test, and that student cannot get that test made up, or do not come in and make up that test, then that is seventy percent of the grade if they receive no credit for that. So, one of the things that both middle and high school wanted to do is make sure that the students took some responsibility for their grades. And so, we talked a lot about that. And when looking at this, when a student is absent from class, or either explained or unexplained absence, it is the student's responsibility to schedule a make-up, retake, and/or schedule time to correct material in a timely manner. A maximum of two weeks is what middle school said they wanted to offer. So, if a student is absent, they're going to, they said, okay, we want to give a little grace time here for this student, that we want them to take responsibility to come in and ask for their homework, or set up a scheduled time to do the homework, or take the test, but we're only going to do that for two weeks. That should be plenty of time. And typically, it's a day plus one. So, if a student is gone, absent today, they would have a day plus one to get that assignment turned in. But middle school said, all right, let's look at two weeks, or as appropriate to course and pacing. So, what that means is if they have to continue to move on, then they may have to shorten that up and say, you know, we can't sit here and hold back two weeks, where I'm already moving three chapters ahead in two weeks' time, to go back and try to do something here. So, course and pacing is one of the main things that was also a common theme at middle school and high school, to make sure that teachers could stay on pace, to keep students moving in the right direction. After that, students will not receive credit for a late assignment. We also felt that it was important to put in the academic dishonesty. This was actually something that the middle school robbed from the high school. The high school had it in there. They liked it, so they said, let's put that under the middle school section. So, that then ties into what's in our code of conduct when it comes to academic dishonesty. And again, we did put a note on there, please refer to the code of conduct for consequences. Moving into the high school, we spent a lot of time talking about it first, total points versus percentages or grades, and as a teacher, you need to have the flexibility with whatever you're comfortable with. So, you know, there was talk of saying, okay, let's everybody do total points, or let's everybody do, and then they, well, let's just leave it, we're going to put it in there, either total points or average, however teacher is most comfortable, let them do it, whatever. They're the expert in the classroom, let them have control over that. Now, you'll see that we get into some differences with the summative at the high school level. Student scores on summative assignments will range from no credit to full credit. Credit will only be given for assignments that are attempted. So, they wanted to make the term, you know, the defining theme here is that if you don't attempt it, again, you're not going to receive credit. So, no credit will be awarded for any assignment that is not attempted. At the teacher's discretion, and this is where you start getting into some flexibility at the high school level, at the teacher's discretion, students may be permitted to make up, retake, and/or correct materials in a timely manner as appropriate to the course and pacing. Students must schedule a time with the teacher, which may fall outside of the course's normal class time. Retakes and/or corrections can result in a lower grade than the original. So, again, they're looking at putting the responsibility on the students for coming in, scheduling that time, asking for that homework, what they missed. With today, everything's on canvas, so a lot of those students already have the assignments, because it's on canvas anyway, for those teachers that utilize Canvas and the electronic format in that capacity. Same thing with the formative. One of the things they did mention here is that teachers may accept, in the last line, teachers may accept formative work submitted after its due date for full, partial, or partial credit at teacher's discretion. So, one of the things that they mentioned here, that note, due to the day-to-day nature of formative assessments, these are not always going to be made up. In this case, an alternate assignment may be offered. And our science teachers gave that example. We're doing a lab. You missed a lab that day, I just can't set up that lab and recreate that lab for that student that missed. So, I've got to come up with something, an alternative assignment that I feel is equal to that lab for that student to do because they were gone. So, that's one of the things that they wanted to make note on when it comes to teacher discretion. It's not, we do have listed in here due dates and makeups, so it's not saying that they're not going to, if you're absent, a student's not going to have the opportunity. The thing is, and one of the biggest, you know, and I heard this, and I'm not going to say complaints, because it wasn't a complaint, it was, one of the biggest issues that teachers had was when a student would just say, I don't want to do the assignment, I'm not going to do the assignment, just give me the fifty, or I'm not going to take the test, I don't need to take the test, then, you know, that's, they wanted to make sure that they had the discretion. So, if a student is going to come in and say, I'm not doing that assignment, well, the teacher doesn't have to give them the opportunity to make it up. Now, if there's an extenuating circumstance that causes that student to miss, or maybe there's an explained or unexplained absent, then that teacher can allow that student to make it up. But when it comes to, I'm just not going to do it, they do not have to give that opportunity anymore to allow those students to make up, or to give them just a fifty for not doing anything. So, that's why you see here, when it talks about teacher discretion, and that you have to attempt it to get something. Also here, they put in academic dishonesty, due dates and makeups. Again, this is where they talk about due dates for the submission of work, whether summative or formative. They're going to look at the grading periods. Its due date should not be within a different reporting period, barring extenuating circumstances. When a student misses class time, it is a responsibility of the student to find out what information of work were missed, when a student misses class due to absences. So, they also talked about excessive absences here. So, as you know, some of our schools have, we're chronically absent. We have students that have missed twenty, thirty, forty days. For those students that miss chronically, then those teachers can say, okay, instead of having to sit there and add up the day plus one, so I'm there on Monday, but I skipped Tuesday, I skipped Wednesday, but I'm there Thursday, then I skipped Friday, they're sitting there having to add up those days, this gives the teacher the flexibility to say, okay, this week's work is due on this day. I'm not going to sit here and add up all these days for this. They're going to use, basically, their judgment to make a plan for that student, to have a timeframe for them to turn those assignments in. Moving on, looking throughout this policy, some of the things that we added, when you look at course and grading, we added P. That indicates that a student has met the objectives, that's a pass, when you have the P for pass or fail. Elementary, K-1, these were separated in the previous policy. We decided that, you know, this group wanted to put them together. Also, the O, the S, the P, and the N, they've been using those for report cards, but what we had was totally different. So, what was in the grading policy, we hadn't used in some time, had we, Ms. Ruzel?
Correct.
So, it was time, it was time to actually put in there what we were using, and so, we corrected those and got that put in there with the O, S, P, and N. And elementary two through five, that kind of stayed together. We did add the S, P, and N. When you look at the middle school, students will see the grade of A, B, C, or D, or F in English, math, history, civics, science, any class for high school credit. All other classes will receive a pass/fail. So, they're kind of giving a defining, that you're going to receive a letter grade for those courses, everything else is going to be a pass/fail. Determining a nine-weeks grade, that was added and updated there. The one thing I did want to mention, when you get to the number three, if the student's quarterly grade is lower than a fifty in any grading period, the grade will be overwritten by the teacher to be a fifty. Now, I'll explain that here. So, this was a high school recommendation, and when we get to the next page, we'll talk about those, because when you get to your quality points, an A is four, B two, an F is zero, it doesn't matter if it's a fifty, a thirty, a forty, or whatever, an F is zero points. So, if a student has a forty for an average, they receive zero quality points for a forty percent as they would for a fifty percent. And what the high school teacher said, maybe that student came in that first semester, they struggled that first semester, but then that second semester, or, sorry, nine weeks, that first nine weeks, they struggled that first nine weeks, but then came in that second nine weeks and really made a lot of ground up. And I could see progress, and I can put my stamp on here that, yes, they know the content, it's just we had a rough start. The high school teacher said, we don't want to create a situation where a student can't dig themselves out of a hole. So, that was a recommendation from the high school teachers, that nothing, as far as when it comes to the quality points at the end of a nine weeks, that an F would be an F, which is a forty, fifty, forty, thirty, anything below. F, which is a 40, 50, 40, 30, anything below. And as you turn over to the next page, you can see where we used the, we added this semester calculation, where you can see quarter, subject X, letter grade, conversion points to compute. So you can see that you have a B, a C. We put an asterisk there to understand that for fractions of a 1.5 will be rounded up by the teacher, at teacher discretion, based on student performance. What they talked about there is that, you know, that student comes in, they're doing good, and then all of a sudden, they just drop off, don't want to do any homework, don't do any tests, they're just, they've checked out. Their grade is a 2.5, that teacher has the discretion to round that up to a B or leave it a C. Now, that's on the reverse side of what I just talked about. If that student started with an F, had a 50, but then they worked and worked and worked to get those, that second semester, and say that student pulled that up to where they had a C, then that teacher could override that and say, "Okay, yes, we want to give this student the benefit of the doubt." So that's where they kind of pulled that together. This next graph here, that was left in there from the previous, that is a full year. And then the last updates, turn over to the back two pages. Sorry, I did not number these. I will number these. One of the big changes is at the middle school for grade classification. The current policy states that a student has to pass English, math, and two other subjects. They didn't say what those two other subjects are. It could be band, it could be PE, it could be math or science, it could be history. What we want to do, and this is recommendation from this committee at middle school, is require that they have to pass the core. They need to pass the core, and they do. So they're recommending English, math, science, and history. Now, if they, if we have a student that does not pass that, then we have to remediate over summer school. So it may be summer school, or say it's a seventh grader that failed seventh grade math. Well, even as an eighth grader, they could take that seventh grade math and then roll into their eighth grade math and do a repeat while taking other courses, but then having to retake that seventh grade math. So there's ways that they can work around that to make sure that the student does have the understanding and the knowledge of the content without just saying, "Okay, you're going to get a 50." But that is one of the big things and big changes. Right now, we're getting ready at the end of this year. We'll start summer school, typically at middle school, that's math and English. Next year going in, we could be having math, English, science, and history. So that means it'll be an increased cost on us as a division to offer science and history summer school. There's also, when you look at, and you can see the edits on there, a student that does not pass a core subject, this kind of defines what I was just talking about, if they fail one of those four core subjects. So this paragraph, these two paragraphs kind of outline that of what we will do. And that starts with, "A student that does not pass a core subject course may recover the credit by attending summer school or repeating the course the following school year." And then we talk about how we offer summer school, talk about the overall programs. If the student does not attend summer school, or if the course is not available, the student may be scheduled to repeat the course during the following year. Students that do not pass all four classes may be recommended for retention. And this is where it gets different. So what you see in the elementary proposal for retention, it's going to be the parents have the last decision as far as when it comes to elementary. When you get down here, the proposal is, is that if a student is recommended for retention, and the parent does not want the child to be retained because they didn't pass all four content areas, then the parent has to appeal the school's decision or the teacher's decision to the principal. There is a committee formed at the school. That committee will review, they make a decision. If the parent does not still like that, then it goes to the superintendent's designee, which will be the assistant superintendent for instruction. That, at that point, then the designee will form another committee, which includes the parent, that will include the school principal, and then it'll include the curriculum coordinator. So now you have people that are outside, you have the principal and the parent there, but you now have a coordinator, the assistant superintendent. And then they will hear that out through that committee and make a determination, and then the designee's decision will be final. So there's a different process setting up at the middle school than what you would see at the elementary school. And then, of course, at secondary, if you don't pass the class, you just don't pass the class. You have to retake it. We're on four-by-four, you have four years to pass Algebra I, to get your SOL. If you have to take it all four years, you have to take it all four years to pass your Algebra I. So they go off of credits. The only thing we updated, the old policy had 14 credits to go from 11th to 12th grade, and that is 15 in the program of studies, so we made sure that those matched. And then the final thing added, principals are allowed to change, and this is in the middle, actually, it's going to be this third sentence in the last paragraph. Principals are allowed to change a total of five grades in any school year. If there is a need to change more than five grades, the principal must seek prior approval from the superintendent's designee before any changes are made to any student's educational record. And then, of course, they must consult the teacher, the parent, the counselor, and follow all of that procedure. So we added that, those couple of sentences, and just to tidy that up a little bit. And that is what we've been working on for the last couple of months. The plan now, going forward, is to get parent input on this. So we will get this with Mr. Grant's, is he still here? See, I already left this. With Mr. Grant's help, he will get this posted on our website. He will also put, typically, he will put a Google form where a parent can comment on it, and then we will look at those comments, see if we need to make edits, try to answer questions, and then continue to reviews it, review this, and make changes as we need to. So, any questions?
And the plan will be that this will go out clearly in the handbook for the 2022, 2023 school year, and that parents will be prepared, along with their student, that things are going to change, and you don't get to have a 50 just for not showing up.
Yes, ma'am. And this will be one of our talking points with parents, with teachers on back-to-school night, and with administrators, to make sure that these are being handed out, and so that when those parents come in and the teachers, the teacher can then talk about the change in the policy, so that we are just getting that out there to everybody.
So I really appreciate all the work that went into this. I didn't know that there was such a policy until I ran in 2019. This was something that came up, and it was the craziest thing that I thought I'd ever heard, that you could get a 50%. That's like your low grade, so I'm really happy to see that finally this is changing.
Well, the committees were great, and I enjoyed working with them. So they really jumped in there, and I know, I think Lisa said on one of them, I know Buck said in, Mr. Goodwin said on, she said on, yep. So they were important, and I let the teachers drive it. So I was basically just a recorder. As they're talking, I'm typing away. And, you know, we did have some that were, as we moved through this process, that the teachers would get together with their staff, and then they would go in there and put something on the working document and highlight it, so that when we had that meeting, we could discuss it. And if we, and if the group liked it, then we just, it was easier for me to copy and paste it up there than to sit there and try to record what everybody was saying. So, you know, we got more efficient as we went along too. So, but they did a great job, and they were in the driver's seat the entire time when it came to the policy. Really, the only thing I did was go back through there and make sure we had some consistency on some terminology, but no wholesale changes to what the teachers wanted.
I think this is going to be a hard year for some students, but hopefully it gets them better prepared for the real world in college where this kind of thing doesn't exist. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the grading policy for tonight?
I had a couple of clarification questions, just so I understand what we're saying. One of them, I don't think I understood what you were saying about the 50% at the quarter and then this, like...
Right. A zero plus three would be, divide that by two.
Right. So why did you get, so why did you get a 50% instead of a 0% if we make it zero anyway?
I understand what you're saying, but that is what the high school, and I would have to go back to them because that's how they wanted me to put it in there in place. So it's just that they could have the benefit of seeing it helping that student continue on.
But you're not averaging the number from the first quarter with the number from the second quarter because you're converting it to the points first?
Well, that was one of the things that we did discuss, but again, I just, you know, they said a zero is a zero.
Right.
So, and they said that it would help.
Sure, I understand. But okay, if it makes sense to them.
I had a hard time with that.
I'm not, I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, I just don't quite understand there.
So, I'm just looking, you weren't in on that one, so I don't have a high school person here. I don't have a high school person here. I'll hit clarification and give you a better answer than what I have tonight.
And just out of curiosity, when you were talking about the summer school for the middle school, and I assume for high school too, how many classes can a student take in summer school?
So it's only remediation. So right now, they could take two classes.
Okay. So they could essentially fail two of these and still stand on track in the summer if they pass those?
Yes.
What would you do if a student passed like two of these and didn't pass them in summer school, and they were retained? I assume they're moving on with their other, I mean, would their classes be different if they were retained or not retained? Because either way, you'd still have to retake the ones you didn't pass, and you'd move on to the other subjects, I assume.
So in looking at that, and what Mr. Johnson explained, was that you have, he could go ahead and say, "Okay, but as a seventh grader, we're going to keep you and put you in some of these eighth grade classes while you're taking these courses, and we can do it on a shortened. Maybe you're not taking some of your electives or some of your specials because you're having to take these courses while you're also taking Math 8. So maybe you're taking Math 7 and Math 8 at the same time to make sure that you get those credits to be able to move on to the ninth grade the next year. But you're not going to go take band, or you may not go take PE because you have to take this Math 7 again." So that's one of the things that they also explained, that they could try to keep them with that cohort. But again, once they get to high school, they can make that up really quick at the high school level. So really, we have, they can get 32 credits, and for a standard diploma, they need 22. So a high school senior can, you know, you can get on with your cohort real quick, and we can put you on that plan.
Next is going to be presentation on Title I, II, III, and IV draft grant applications. That's Ms. Rudesell and Ms. Voice.
Good evening. There was a time when we would present the Title I, II, III, and IV grants at a meeting and ask you to approve those at that same meeting. And these are pretty lengthy grants, and so we know that the board needs some time to read through those and process those before you should be asked to vote to approve or not approve those applications. So we are here this evening. We attached each of the grants there for you all to review. Ms. Voice is also wonderful about creating a summary document that takes all of that and puts it in one place, so you can see what our potential funding is, and then how we currently or are proposing that those funds be spent for the coming grant cycle. So I don't know if you want me to read down through all of those. I'm happy to do so if you would like me to. Or if you have had an opportunity to look at them and have any questions now, either one of us will certainly be available for any questions you would have in between now and your June meeting, so we're happy to answer those. That way, Ms. Voice is here. I understand and know and have been a part of the conversations when it comes to what we're proposing those funds be spent on, but if you have any logistical questions about the writing of the grant and rules and things like that, then Ms. Voice is definitely the person who will better answer those questions.
I guess, is there anything in particular you want to share specifically, or?
I would say, as far as the Title I application goes, and what we have, what we're currently using those funds for, and what we propose we continue to use those funds for, are the instructional coaches. And our instructional, four of our five elementary schools receive Title I funding, and that's based on the percent of students who are in poverty in each of those schools. So E. Wilson Morrison, Hilda J. Barber, LFK, and Russi Jeffries all receive Title I funding. So at those schools, at Hilda J. Barber and LFK, they each have one instructional coach. E. Wilson Morrison and Russi Jeffries each have two instructional coaches. And again, based on the number of free reduced, children receiving free and reduced lunch or who qualify for free and reduced lunch, who attend that school. They are, okay, so I'll speak now as principal at one of those schools. Without those positions, without the people who support our teachers in that way, my job would look significantly different. We are fortunate enough to have two of those coaches, who are master teachers and who support our teachers every single day, and the instructional program every single day. And I know it is the same at all of the schools who have those coaches. So I would put that in there as something that, you know, I really hope that we can continue with. Another huge thing that we do is the remediation portion of what, our Title I funds all go toward providing the best education for every child that we possibly can, and a big part of that is remediating those students whose skills aren't where we need them to be right now. So the LLI program that you all approved, funding for additional materials, that is a program that we've used in all five of our elementary schools this year, and have, Ms. Bragg collected data from all the schools to show the impact that that particular program has had, and it has had a significant impact at all of our schools. Again, shifting into principal mode, it has had an incredible impact on our students' reading proficiency, and that will show up in all five elementary schools, English, SOL schoolers. So as far as Title II goes, there are also two personnel, two salaries that are being paid for. Now, I'm going to let Ms. Voice talk about, we have had a separate Title II and a separate Title IV grant up until now, but we are, there's transferability.
Yeah. So we are allowed to transfer the money from Title IV into Title II, and you can see the Title IV amount was a little less, it's like 70,000. So in doing that, we're able to fund two positions. One that's going to support our teachers to help us retain those teachers, then the instructional technology coordinator, again, with instruction helping teachers, induction coaches, stipends that are paid. There are also mentors in building, so all of those things are going to help us support our teachers and retain them, hopefully.
That is the goal.
That's the goal. And we also provide the professional development if they need coursework or anything to get their license.
And Ms. Voice would be also better to talk about the Title III grant than would I. She works much more closely with that.
Our Title III grant is pretty small, and it is to supplement what we already have. It doesn't pay for teacher salaries that are required by the state. So we do professional... So, we do professional development, we do have some additional materials and support stuff that we can do with that, parent outreach, and then we have tutoring for our ESL students in a summer program. I think it's interesting to note, too, through all of those programs, private schools can participate, we do have private schools participating. This is the second year that we've had one participate in Title I. Typically, there's a lot of paperwork with Title I, and they don't wanna do that, but they all, we have like five participate in Title II and IV. And so then, everything that, all their purchase orders have to go through our system, so...
Which is part of, we use, you'll see in the title, under the Title I, proposed expenses, Ms. Voice, and then part of Ms. Strickler's salary can be paid for through those grants, since all of that flows, that work flows through them. Like I said, we'd be happy to answer any questions now, but we're also happy to answer any questions in between now and the, and when we bring these before you all at the first two meetings.
So I have a question just about how these run in general, because I'm new to this position. Is this a grant that, like, are we applying for more funding because we need it, or is it like, you're gonna get this amount of dollars, and what we do is report how we wanna use it?
So these are staying, they're allocated, so, so they, they look at our population, depending upon, maybe it's, you know, your free and reduced lunch, or your direct cert, or something of that nature, that they'll say, okay, these are your, this, this is your number that we're gonna use to put in this formula to drive your Title I monies, your other title funds. And the same thing when you look at, for instance, with the 621, which I used to call it the flow-through, which is the special education, they look at your total number of students that you're serving, that goes into a formula to give you an allocation. Sometimes those, those allocations can go up or down, depending upon, you know, if there's less students in the pot, then your, your allocation can go up. If there's more students thrown into the pot, your allocation can go down, depending upon how much, how many funds or the amount of funds that the federal government will send to the state, because that is a federal, this is a federal program, so it's sent to the state, then the state gives us an allocation. So right now, they give us a tentative allocation, which we, they tell us, use last year's allocation. And then, once, and, and this is all due by July 1, so Donna has to do these, all these grants and applications, and figure all this stuff up on last year's allocation. Then she'll get the, the current year's allocation, and it may be 100,000 more, 100,000 less. Then she has to go in there and edit that, that document, and then resubmit it. So, so it's the process that, that we have to go through as far as when it comes to getting our, our formula dollars, and that's really what they're called, is formula dollars, because it goes into that formula to be submitted.
And when does that second one happen, like, September, October, or like...
Usually, the allocations come out in August, hopefully. It has been as late as September, but they do try to get them out in August, because we're, we're employing people, so we need to make sure we have that covered.
Are there any, I know you mentioned like kind of the highlights for each one, are there any like big changes this year to how we have used these funds in the past, or are we using it in a similar way?
The biggest change is transferring the Title IV and the Title II money into one pot. Previously, we, we've paid for those same, or we've paid for similar positions, but we've paid for parts of them, you know, a portion of the salary through this grant, and a portion of the salary through this grant, which means then that Donna and Donna have a lot of different places where they're processing reimbursements. So, putting these together then does make life a little bit easier, yeah. And so it's really not any different use of the grant money, we're just pulling it together so that logistically, it's, it's easier to manage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And moving on to the discussion on alternative classroom locations for some LFK students during construction. We have a couple...
All right, come on, Grace, Buck, Mike, Grace.
I'm Jessica Vaca, I'm assistant principal at LFK.
So, we have the, the construction or renovation of LFK in our very near future, and so when looking at that, and I'm gonna turn this over to Greg and Jess a lot concerning the, the scope of everything, but the way that they have scheduled the work, they have to do it in pods. And so, the, the site where they have to store and locate, and the area within the school that is gonna be renovated, as that moves over the next 18 to months or so, basically two years starting in August, it's August, by August 24th, we have to have a plan in place, because we're gonna be down some pods, or we're gonna be down some space within that building. And so, looking at what are our best options moving forward, and what can we do to really make sure the construction side of it goes okay, but also, we have some consistency with, you know, we wanna make sure our students have some consistency, and that we, we have them in some places that, that we know it could be two years that they're, they're there. And so when looking at that, I'm gonna let just Greg kinda talk about the scope of the construction and the site, and some of the, the struggles that we're gonna have there.
Yep. And some of you may recall, when we had the A&E firm Rem and Parker come in a few months back, and kinda go through the scope, and you know, what the building, what we're gonna do to the building, and what we're planning to do, along with that timeline, toughest part about this, as we lack the swing space or vacant space within the building, we have to look at where can we put the students while the construction is taking place. Given the timeframe we're working in, because of the deadlines, they have broken it down into five individual phases of construction within the school. Now, each phase of construction, and this is during, you know, during school, this is what we've got to have. We are looking at two pods, essentially 10 classrooms each.
Correct.
That the contractor would be working in. That gets finished, it gets occupied, we move on to the next pod. The common areas are core areas of the building, the main office areas, if you remember, there's a secured entrance vestibule planned, and then we've got hall, you know, work in the hallway, so that is planned to take place in the summer, the, the final summer before, the summer of 2024, really, is what we're looking at doing that. So, the swing space, and you know, met several months ago with the principal, Shamika, and involved, and we looked at possibilities, what could we do within the building to accommodate 10 classrooms? Where could we put the students? We looked at all the modulars, the trailers they have out back, we considered the cafeteria, and I think possibly the media center or the library at the time.
The gym.
And we looked at the gym. Now, you know, if some of you may recall, AS Roads renovations, we used the gym as classroom space, but that was a much shorter duration. You know, that construction period was much shorter than what we're anticipating for Again, looking to get the, the construction documents out, bid sometime in July, have bids in in August, board approval, county approval of funding, have the contract start, construction start January of 2023, because that contractor will need that fall to stage equipment, get equipment ordered, et cetera. And we'll need to do the same with the school working within, because I'm sure, we're gonna have C containers on site somewhere to just store some furniture during the construction. You know, the, the school's gonna have to travel light, as we do the construction, and we move from phase to phase, you know, so I'm sure we're gonna have some storage needs over there for that. So, that was the initial plan that we discussed. I know there's additional talk of, you know, now, other plans to possibly move the fifth grade, fourth, fifth grade classes.
And one of the things that, that, you know, schools like to do, like, like we did at AS Roads, is you put a modular out there. But, we are, we're limited to...
Space.
To space, and because of geography, of where you can, you really can't put a modular there, because if you put it in one of the parking spots, then you don't have a place for your teachers to park. They're parking out on a main road, which is a residential street, which they would fill that probably all the way down to...
Step off.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, so, so there's, there's a lot of limitations, just because of the topography and, and other things that we're looking at there.
Yeah, not to mention the cost of the, you know, the modular units themselves. You know, yes, you've got the delivery setup and removal costs of the modulars, but you also got other associated costs. You need temporary electrical service for the modulars, therefore, you've got an electrical contractor, and you've got the counter front rail, depending upon where they're placed, if you could place them, you'll need another utility pole to step down to his, the contractor's meter, then you have what I refer to as the low voltage systems within those classrooms, you've got fire alarm, you've got door access systems, you've got data. The units come pre-wired, so to speak, but you gotta bring the data and everything to low voltage to those buildings. So this, it's gotta comply with fire code also. Again, as I mentioned, we're so limited on space, and Dr. Ballinger mentioned the topography over there, is we got a lot of hills, so there's not much turf or grass area to put it. I don't remember the exact dimensions of a four-classroom modular, and that's what we had at AS Roads also. I know it was 66 feet long, that's sticking out in my head, because we had to figure out if the truck could make the turn to get into the driveway, and then we placed them on an asphalt playground. But you've also got the available accessible decking, handicap ramps, stairs, et cetera. So, your footprint for the dimensions, that grow quite a bit, you know. Again, we had an excess of over 120,000 dollars invested for a six-month lease, actually turned out, I think, Rob, to be seven? For some reason, I think we had one additional month under that. So, it was 120,000 dollars. Now, I was hoping to get some rough order of magnitude cost for you today, and no matter, if you looked at modulars, and no matter where we would've put those, I wasn't able to get a hold of the vendor in time, so I just put, it was two years ago, so I just used an annual 5% escalator, and essentially added 10% to the cost of what we did at Roads, you know, and we're at 170,000 plus. You know, that, and I'll say that's conservative, but you know, just to kinda give us an idea tonight of the money we would have to spend for the modular units.
And that is if you're in close proximity to bathrooms.
Yes, and I did confirm with the county, the code official today, one, if we're under 500 feet, we're not required to put restrooms in the modular units. Of course, at AS Roads, we weren't 40 feet from the gymnasium, which had restrooms, so that worked out well for us. So, we're okay on that. I will say, the other, it could be a significant cost, is the type of foundation or piers that the unit sits on. Example, AS Roads was an asphalt play surface, we knew it was gonna be six months, so we did not have to go 24 inches deep below the freeze line and pour concrete footers. County says, okay, you can do a dry stack CMU or concrete block on pads, that's what we did. We would still be required with new units, no matter where we put them, to go two foot below grade. Now, it doesn't have to be a poured concrete footer, but it has to be two foot below grade, and we build up from there to support the trailers. I remember distinctly 40 piers or footers for the units of an AS Road, so you gotta poke 40 two-foot deep holes, two-foot diameter holes in the ground, you know, then you gotta put everything back. So, that is an additional cost that we need to consider for this.
So as we looked at modular, and, you know, the limitations that we had at LFK, Ms. McDonald and Ms. Vaca had to look at, okay, we're gonna have to work in these pods, and here's some, some classrooms that we're gonna have to identify that we need to do something else, so that we can manage all of this. And I'll kinda, kinda let Ms. Vaca talk you through the conversations that her and Ms. McDonald had, what led to kind of their selection of, of, of great groups or classrooms and things that they considered.
Sure, so this first phase will affect primarily two pre-K classrooms, a special education room, four therapy offices, so your occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech, and ESL, five general education classrooms, and a glass house, which is like a collaborative area we use for remediation or enrichment. So, looking at that, right now, if you would look at our school, our fifth grade doesn't even have a pod. Our school's amazing, we have over 530 students, though, no walls, no doors. So, right now, our fifth grade is dispersed throughout the school. Previously, our fifth grade was at the middle school, and they did well there. So we looked at that option with our teachers, we discussed with them, you know, when you were there, tell us, you know, some of the pros and cons of it. They like that there is space available there. I was the assistant principal at Hilda J. during that time, and there are four classrooms there that are right next to each other, therefore, the teachers could still, you know, if they wanted to departmentalize, if students need to switch classrooms, they're all right there together. That they feed into the middle school eventually, that was noted as a pro, that the students would eventually be at the middle school anyway, so it would kinda get them acclimated with the building. As far as breakfast and lunch, that would remain the same, you know, you wouldn't have to worry about changing our schedule, they would still run on the LFK schedule, they would still have the same breakfast and lunch. Transportation could easily adjust, and recess would still be available, and pretty much teachers that previously taught in that building already have relationships with some of the staff and administration there. So we're already familiar with Warren County Middle School, with their routines, with the administration, with the other staff members. And overall, you know, we had good parent and teacher reviews whenever we did do it previously. One of the staff members is also a parent at that time, and she said her child transitioned really well after being at the middle school his fifth grade year. So, we wanted to look at it again, but we wanted to look at it even more so that we want these students to still feel like they are little cats, that they're part of our LFK family. So we kind of revamped with our faculty again, our fifth grade teachers, and said, you know, how can we make sure that they still know that they're LFK students? We don't want them to feel displaced. So we talked about, in the morning, they would be dropped off at LFK, and we would bus them to Warren County Middle School. Our specials teachers would be their first rotation, and specials teachers could ride the bus with the students to the middle school. You know, of course, if students want, if parents want to drop their students off directly at the middle school, they could do that, but our buses, we would ask that all of our students be bused to LFK every morning and every afternoon, and we would still have them in our facility daily. So we like that part of it, too. Being able, now that we have student support coaches and counselors, we can provide that daily over at the middle school, which would also be beneficial. Let's see, what else did we note? Oh, this time also, we talked about, you know, some other hiccups we've had previously, we talked about this time, we could have an instructional assistant kind of be the secretarial duties for LFK, so we could have a direct line for our fifth grade that would go directly to that person's phone. So therefore, you wouldn't have the middle man of the middle school having to worry about, you know, communicating, you know, if somebody's getting picked up a different way, or there's a parent with a concern, we would have a direct line to an LFK staff member to help with those secretarial duties. Again, they would have specials daily, we could use the auxiliary gym for gym class if they can't go outside, we'd have the chorus room every other day, library and art, they could push in as needed, and these, again, we would ask our teachers to drive over and to ride the bus with these students. Students would eat lunch in the cafeteria, but they would be separate from the middle school, so they would be eating at a separate time. We would still have, you know, restrooms available, but we would try to make scheduled restroom breaks. So, we want them to feel welcomed at the middle school, but we still want them to know that they are our LFK students. So of course, you know, we want them there before school, after school, for any events we have, if we were to have, you know, an activity day or something like that, we would want them there as well. So those are some of the things that we talked about as far as pros for them going to the middle school.
So when you look at your classes that, that you need to make space for, you have your, your pre-K, so you have two, two pre-K class, classrooms that, that we need to find space for.
Correct.
And so, one of the things that we can look for at, for pre-K space, is that, you know, Mr. Smith and I, we went over and we, we met with Royal United Methodist Church the other day, Territor Facility, they have a second floor that, that has some space on there that could just be a dedicated wing. We also know that, in talking with Ms. Helmberg, she has one open, open classroom, but she has a STEM lab. She said she could possibly move that STEM lab to create two classrooms at, at Russie Jeffries, to help with that pre-K. We also know that there's, that Skyline Middle School on the second floor, they have kinda like a little alcove that there's, like, probably three or four classrooms, I think, Buck, that, that, you know, that's vacant, that we could put some, some, some classes in there. So, so we have some space. I did contact also both high schools. Now, they have some open sp- Now, they have some open space, but as they said, it's going to be spread out, and it may be a classroom in the math department, it may be a classroom in the English department, it may be a classroom in the science department. You get where I'm going, that it's not kind of all combined and put into one area that's kind of that pod mentality that, that we, that we want. I also, I'm going to go out and I'm going to meet and walk through at Riverton United Methodist Church tomorrow, and I'll look at their facility to kind of see what they have. I did talk to Ms. McDonald and Ms. Vaca earlier this morning, that I want them to go look at the United Methodist Church at Front Royal, and then also want them to go out and look at the Riverton as well, as we discuss what are our options for, for moving our students. So, so that's pre-K. So we have that whole pre-K wing, that that's one of the, that's, that's, that's probably, that's on their first.
That's phase one.
That's phase one. And then you have your fifth grade, that there's seventy-eight students. That's four teachers.
Correct.
So we need to find four classrooms. And so as Ms. Vaca was talking about with the experience that, you know, yes, we did have the experience at, at Warren County Middle School through last year, when we actually sent Hilda and LFK. Now, last year, we were spreading people out all over the place. You know, Warren County Middle School had half their students one day and half their students the next day, but they were still in that pod for Hilda students. Now, and I believe it was LFK, they were down in the auxiliary gym, the wrestling room. That's where they had their classrooms set up. But, you know, right now, they still have those four classrooms on that one end that, that's a pod, that, that those, those classrooms are right there together in, in that facility. Looking at, at other options, you know, I, I cannot recommend, you know, to the board a modular because there's just no place to put one. The only place you could think about putting one would be out in the parking lot at maybe one of our high schools. When I was talking to Greg about the modular, again, today, he said, well, you could possibly put one at Hilda, but then you're taking away your parent loop, and then you have a bus and a parent loop coming in together, which is really a no. Because they need to be separate. You don't want to have buses coming in and car riders coming in to be unloaded at the same spot. That's just a tragedy waiting to happen. So looking at, at what we, we need to offer and what we need to do, I would like to keep our pre-K together, whether that's at one of our churches that is, you know, of course, when we went over, we talked logistics and, and Buck, I'll, I'll let Mr. Smith talk a little bit about logistics at, at the sites, as far as transportation, whether it's to a middle school or to a church, how much room we have. But with your pre-K, we could put the pre-K either one of our churches, we could put the pre-K at R.C.'s. We can also.
We can also put a pre-K at Hilda, and that's probably, if we're moving two, two preschools to LFK, there's currently two preschools in LFK. The plan next year was to, to downsize a preschool at LFK anyway, so it was to go to one LFK classroom. So we'd really only need one space, but I understand wanting to keep both of those schools together. The whole philosophy with any kind of preschool classroom or pathways and connections classroom serving significantly, students with significant needs are to keep them in the home school that they'll be transitioning to into elementary school. Because one less transition for those students is key, especially when they're that young. So, and, and there's a lot of other factors. These students are funded through a variety of sources, the Virginia Preschool Initiative, as well as early childhood special education. So currently, and, and the population is growing significantly, so it was kind of, it, it's, it's difficult. We're planning to have eleven preschools next year. If we took both LFK preschools, as Dr. Ballinger was saying, to keep them together, we would actually, we only need one preschool at LFK. From my work on this this afternoon is, the best place to do that would be Hilda J. Only, they do have a computer lab that we can pull out, and it won't have a bathroom, but some of these other options in the middle school, high school, the Blue Ridge Tech Center, and in this building, don't have bathrooms in those classrooms either. So I think the Hilda, the Hilda classroom would be the best for that. And just so you can have the sheer numbers of, of where we're going with preschool, there are currently a hundred and forty-five, I'm sorry, a hundred and seventy-five preschool students funded through a variety of things. A hundred and eighteen of them are four-year-olds, forty-five are three-year-olds, and then you have students that are blended through both. They have significant disabilities. Some of them meet the VPI income requirements, but they also meet the early childhood special education requirements and have a, have a disability. So those hundred and seventy-five kids are real needy, so that's what makes the, the problem pretty complex. But looking at it, I think my recommendation would be Hilda. Before we move, before we move into the community, because we've looked at the, we've looked at those community spots before. There is, I think, I'm sure Dr. Ballinger could get this done. However, the, the, the add-on grant, the community add-on grant, or the mixed delivery grant, which is in the community, that window closed on the fifteenth of May. So I'm sure Dr. Ballinger could get a waiver and, and talk to the Department of Ed to do that. But that, that, it's an option, but I, I think we, I think we could do it at Hilda.
Thanks, Buck. Just when we step outside of the school area, some of the things that we also have to consider are that just, we would be transporting the students there by bus, so have the availability of, of off-site that would have the space and so forth to, to bring in a bus. And also, as we were looking at the, the Methodist Church there, to be able to have an entrance into the parking lot where a bus itself, to make sure that it can make that turn. It's easier to make it in our car, but it's, it's a lot more difficult when you're moving a, a large bus and you make that turn and the backside still stays where it's at as you're, as you're starting to, to go in. Also, inside the facility themselves, just to make sure that we have our ADA compliance as far as with our restrooms, also the amount of space that we would need for the classrooms, communication, a phone line, and those type of things that we would have through our school division. Also, just some green space of some sort, some area for the children to, to go out and have some play area and space and those type of things. Some of that's been limited of some of the places that we've looked at. As it comes down to food service for meals, if we're an off-site location, then we're going to have to be transporting those meals from the closest school that we would, that we would have. So those are some of the, the challenges or some of the issues initially that we've looked at to try to overcome if we went off school property.
And with, with that, there is the opportunity for some increased funding next year for the, the majority of the hundred and eighteen VPI students. The increase for the allocation is going to be seven hundred and sixty-five dollars per child. And if you do that math, it, it's about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of additional funding that were not calculated into our staff, we didn't calculate into our staffing next year yet. So we'll be able to look at a significant number of staff members with the additional funding. If we, if we choose a community spot, we could provide additional staff to support them there, or additional staff if, if we look at, at, at some of the other sites. But our, our plan is eleven preschools. That's up from this year, and it's because the kids are, are increasing.
Is the plan of a pre-K class, classes will just be moved for one year versus the five-year, or the two-year that the fifth graders will be, since their pod will be finished?
So I would defer to Greg, because I don't think their pods are going to be changed much, right? Would we keep pre-K out for a couple of years, or would we bring pre-K at back and look at moving others, other classrooms?
I guess we could kind of rearrange the priorities, so to speak, you know, with that, with the pre-K, you know, that could be front, because, yeah, they're not going to get the extensive modifications that the main, the main building will get. And then again, then they're somewhat a different design. Yes, they're getting new HVAC, they're getting, they're getting everything in there. It's just the footprint of those, that pre-K space is totally really different from the open pod. So, and once it's done, it could be bumped up as a priority.
So would we be, would we have the need then to move any other students the second year in? I think, is that, is that your question, Dr. Pence?
It just sounded like the pre-K classroom was going to be done first. I'm trying to see, is this just a one-year problem for them or one-year move for them versus multiple?
Yeah, you know, I'd want to review that with Grimmon Parker again. Again, you know, we were talking at a high-level view, how long's it going to take per pod to get us to that deadline date? Again, the pre-K is, you know, less work, I mean, they're smaller spaces.
And that's the first phase.
That's the first phase.
It might be manageable to do it.
Yep.
Because really, was your plan, Ms. Vaca, then, to move some students into the pre-K classrooms as they?
Move them back in.
Correct, yes. We want to utilize all of our space as much as we can.
Okay, so, so I'm just going to give you a scenario. So phase one, pre-K, that area, that gets done. The next phase, and I'm probably going to get your pod section all mixed, mixed up, but say it's kindergarten and first grade.
Okay.
That's the, that's the next area. Was your plan to move maybe some of your kindergarten classes down to those two classrooms to help vacate that first-grade pod? Because then you can put your first grade in some other areas to vacate that pod by utilizing, because I think.
Yes, you're right.
There's just two classrooms down there, right?
Correct.
Okay, so was that your plan?
Yes, we would end up actually using those pre-K rooms to disperse other students throughout the phases.
Okay, so that means.
So it would be two years.
It'd be confused.
But we would, it would be my recommendation, if we're moving to the school system, to keep them in the Warren County stream, not the, not the Skyline stream, only because of their peers, their, their non-disabled peers and their peers that are a couple of years. We want them in the same stream, because they're the kids they're going to be going to school with for twelve years.
Are we looking at Warren County years? We're talking about starting phase one in January of twenty twenty-three. So are we, at the beginning of this school year in August, are we going to go ahead and place these students in wherever they are displaced to? Or are we going to wait and make that move after winter break?
So we, we discussed that a little bit, and one of the things that we want to make sure is that there's some consistency. With a lot of students making a change, and with teachers making a change in midstream in the middle of the year is, is difficult. Those teachers, if you've ever went into, well, going into some of their classrooms, they've got stuff that they've saved up for twenty years, and whenever they go to that classroom, they want all that stuff with them. Okay? So, so if there's something that's not there, then we, we could have, we could have an issue. So what we talked about was making sure that everything was done upfront, the first start, when school started, just so that, that also allows Greg and his team that if he knows he's going to have to be shuffling out stuff out of that building to make it ready, it gives him a little leeway time to do that, to help eventually get some of that, that furniture out. If we do it at Christmas time, over that break, you're looking at a, a two-week window that you're moving six classrooms, and then you're moving people within that building into the other spaces into that building in a short timeframe. And then you're disrupting, and now all of a sudden, well, I went to school here before I went on break, but now I come back and I'm over here at this school. So consistency for us and for parents, and as they set their schedules for, okay, I know I'm dropping my child off, I'm going to drop him off at this school from day one, instead of I'm dropping him off here August one, but oh, now I've got to drop him off over here coming January one. So, so that's what we talked about as far as having consistency for parents, students, teachers, and everybody involved. That's kind of what.
Correct.
So when we look at everything as far as logistics and, and cost-wise, we know modulators are going to cost us some money. We know we have some open spaces at the, at the secondary levels. So that's either the high schools, which, or the middle schools. We know we have one classroom and one STEM lab that can be converted into a classroom at R.C.'s. We know that, Mr. Hersch is saying that there's, there's one classroom, and I'm sure he hasn't had this conversation with Nicky yet.
I have, I have a moment. I was over there doing that.
Yeah, a, a possible space at Hilda for one classroom. But the thing is, we don't want to disperse all of these kids into different areas, because those teachers are teams. You have, you have to, I mean, they're, they're, they rely upon each other, too. And so we want to make sure that we can put them in an area where they can still be a team, those students can still see their friends. You know, I don't want to separate two fifth-grade classrooms over in this building or two fifth-grade classrooms over here, because now, you know, my best friend's over at the other school, I don't get to see them anymore. You know, we wanted to have some consistency for our students as well. So we look at cost. What's going to help us be cost-effective when it comes to, to one serving meals? If we put them in one of our sites, we have staff on hand, so it's not that we're going to have to transport any food, it's not that we're going to have to hire additional staff. We talked to Ms. McKenzie about that, and she assured us that any of her staff would be able to help take on additional meals, especially if, you know, and we specifically talked about Warren County Middle School staff, and she said, oh, yes, that would not be a problem, they would, they would be able to manage that. And so, so you have that, that we took into consideration. Then the transportation piece, you know, do we have, how many locations are we having to run a shuttle? And how complex could that be? So we would like to make it to where it's, it's not as a complex issue to say, okay, I've got this group going here, I've got this group going here. We need to have one shuttle that we can run to one location so that those students can, can be at that one location for that day and, and have that consistency as well. So yes, you would have the increased cost in your, maybe your, your fuel, but that's just shuttling back and forth. And a lot of times, you may already have a shuttle that's going from that school to that school, so it may not be an increased cost in fuel, because there's already a shuttle being ran. They're just taking students over on their way over to pick up students, to take them somewhere else. So.
Could I add something, Dr. Ballinger? With the, with the preschool as well, and you triggered an idea, I think it's key when we're looking at sites, that a lot of the students with disabilities in the preschools have significant medical needs, and we need to make sure that there's an RN. And, and I think by looking at our, as Dr. Ballinger said, looking at our existing sites within our school community gives them access to the RN. And because I think that, that's probably a, a significant, I know it's a significant need at the preschool level, because the students that we have enrolling, as I alluded to earlier, are having more significant medical needs, particularly when we're bringing in two-year-olds and we're bringing in three-year-olds. A lot of the students that, that qualify for those kinds of services have significant medical needs. So I, I think that's something to take into consideration as well.
And I know as, you know, we've been talking about this for a long time. We've, you know, Ms. Vaca and Ms. McDonald have been on those conversations with the architects, going through designs, meeting with Greg. We've had conversations, looking at options. Buck and I in cabinet meetings, just discussing, you know, what would be best as far as moving forward. We've looked at a lot of different things to, to see what would be the best recommendation for next year. And, and looking at cost, looking at, at availability of services and various things, you know, we feel that whether we can keep our pre-K at one school, whether that's two classes as, you know, that we currently have, or Mike says we're going to one class, you know, that class be at, at Hilda, or if we put those classes at. one class, you know, that class be at Hilda or if we put those classes at Ressies or if we put those classes at one of our community churches, you know, or that Skyline Middle School. I would like to keep that group or that pod together. Fifth grade, we know there's 78 students, so that's four classes with your four teachers that we still need to also offer for specials, which means the PE, the band, you know, or music, art-
Art, library.
Library, all that stuff. We still have to offer those specials. So, you know, when we look at a location for that, is there availability of space for those specials to occur that would not disrupt another school or another facility where it can kind of just be theirs? And, and so when we looked at that and, and one of the questions I asked Ms. Googler, I said, does anybody use that? She said, no. She said, that could all be the fifth grade PE area. That could, you can have it. And then when, in our conversation, we were talking about, Ms. McDonald actually said, well, our, our, our music teacher will come over and she'll do music in the classroom. And Ms. Googler said, my, her band room is available. She said, you can use it and your students may love it and they get that experience of being able to go into, into that room. Because I think it's every other day or something like that when that, that staff member is there on a rotation. And so they could schedule for those times for those students to get that experience in that band room. So, so we took a lot of care to say, okay, we need to make sure that if we do want to move to Warren County Middle School, that, that there's a separate schedule, that we do not have the interaction or the intermingling of fifth graders with sixth, seventh or eighth graders. We need to make sure that we isolate this pod as much as possible. Are you going to have total isolation of the pod? You're not. But can we get it to about 95%? You probably can, probably even a little higher. So, so looking at that, we felt and that it's best for us to look at Warren County Middle School for our fifth graders just because of transportation, because of the child nutrition. I think Aaron was going to run some routes to see if he was thinking it was going to be around 10 minutes to get from LFK to Warren County Middle School. That way he's, he could come out, hit Happy Creek and take that back street without having to go through town and get through all the stoplights if he's going across town or anything like that. So that's kind of the things that we looked at. We did provide just an overview of some other things that we've discussed and, and I know I've had some other conversations lately, but still I feel when, when looking at all of these other possibilities for fifth grade, I still keep coming back to Warren County Middle School is probably the best location for that pod setting that will give them what we're looking for. And we did add kind of down here at the back of that page, if you look at it, kind of a schedule for them that outlines kind of the, what would be the fifth grade schedule and you can see some other things as well because those are different times. So at the arrival, LFK students would arrive between 7:30 and 8:00. You do not have middle school students arriving until 8:30 to 9:00. So that's an hour before any middle school students arrive. Your, your elementary students are already there. Then when you look at your, your, your specials, 8 to 8:45, so you still have, you know, you will not have an interference because you've got students arriving for the middle school but not going to any of the PEs or the gyms or anything like that. So those, those students are in those classes at that time, looking at the academic blocks. But then looking at the lunchtime, when talking with Mrs. Googler right now, now Ms. McDonald said, well, our, our, our fifth graders currently eat at 11 o'clock. And Ms. Googler said, that's great. We don't start lunch until 11:45. So that means that there would be nobody in that cafeteria except for the fifth grade. Then of course, when you look at dismissal, you know, we have to allow, if we have students that are riding the bus, that they would have to leave a little bit early from Warren County Middle School to get to LFK to catch the bus to take them home. So we would have to shorten their day there, those bus riders, approximately 10 minutes to transport them or shuttle them from Warren County Middle School to LFK to catch their normal route bus home. And then those students are out at 2:30 and your middle school students don't get out till 3:30. So they're back in for, for another hour there. Some of the things that we talked about is that, okay, as, as a staff, we would do bathroom breaks. So in between bells, that when your middle school students are changing classes, so in between the bells, when your, your students are changing classes at the middle school, your elementary, your fifth graders will stay in their classroom. Once class starts, that teacher will do class bathroom breaks, take them out, all go down to the bathroom together and be there and then go back. Now, of course, you may have your straggler here or there that didn't go where the bathroom break was, but the plan would be to make sure that there's a staff member that walks down to the bathroom with the student to make sure that, you know, they're just escorted, that they don't get lost. So also what made it kind of also enticing there is that in the center, there's some extra remediation rooms and a room that could be set up with a designated phone line that instead of, instead of parents calling Warren County Middle School, we can route the number from LFK to that phone. And so it could be picked up and it's as if we're, we're still in contact with, with LFK. So it's not changing the number that they're dialing or the, who they're looking for. It's, it's still coming there. And that's what we talked about with the, the administrative assistant or I guess the instructional assistant, kind of helping to manage that as well throughout the day. But they, they've spent a lot of time on this. They've really worked hard to kind of figure out a good plan and thought through just about everything. I know working with Mr. Libase and, and with Buck and with Aaron and Nicole, so I, I have to give credit where credit's due and, you know, that, that goes to Ms. McDonald and Ms. Vaca for looking at everything as far as when it comes to the planning of how can we best serve our students through this transition time as we know it's going to be chaos at our school. So is there anything else you'd like to add or?
No, like I said, I feel like because we kind of were in a similar situation before, we're already a little acclimated, but because we were in the similar situation, we already were able to kind of foresee any barriers we may have had last time. So I felt like planning extensively with the fifth grade teachers and with the team, I felt, you know, we all feel pretty comfortable with the plan of them going to the middle school.
I had initial concerns, but I think they've all been addressed, mostly with the transportation and how isolated would the fifth graders be from the rest of the middle school students and it sounds like just their location and then the offset cafeteria times and arrival and departures really keeps them as their own LFK students, basically.
So my recommendation is going to be that, that as far as for fifth grade, we look at, at Warren County Middle School and that be our site. As far as the pre-K, I still want to go look at Riverton tomorrow. Check that out. I'd still like for Jess and, and Shamika to go look at both Front Royal United Methodist Church and Riverton and then get with Mike to talk about Hilda or get with Nina to talk about, about Ressies for, for our pre-K. And I would, I know we're going to have some, you know, if we use one of our community churches, we're going to have the, the issue of shuttling food. That's going to be another barrier that we'd have to get over. If we're at one of our sites, it could be picked up and absorbed with the cafeteria staff at the same. So there's some good, there's some bad with both of them as you look at, at all of these solutions. So that's kind of my recommendation going forward. Do you guys have any, any other ideas, thoughts, questions, concerns that you'd like us to look at, to consider, to move forward?
I think it'd be sense to pre-K in another elementary school. I mean, I would cross off the option of putting pre-K at any of the older schools just because as you pointed out, they're vulnerable children and they just, they don't need to be around high schoolers and middle schoolers. And we've got the elementary school options. So personally, I don't know, would you cancel your tour of the church?
I would say- Yeah, I would lean toward keeping them in one of our schools because that's, keeps them as part of our school division. I think that's wonderful that the churches were willing to accommodate us-
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
...and be willing to work with us on it. But to me, if we have space in our own schools-
We found the space, yeah.
...I'd lean with that.
I was a little concerned with the, being a former middle school teacher, you never know what's going to happen sometimes. But the way this is laid out and I'm familiar with Warren County Middle School, the planning that went in seems to be great. I like the space utilization, the fact that the specials will be able to come in, the band, for example, and a band room versus a classroom. Look at the jumpstart those kids are going to get. And you'll still have your PE, of course, and the other specials. Space utilization, just from a management point of view, is really good. We're not, you know, we're not breaking the bank with modulars. Those, that's saving some big bucks there. Plus the modulars aren't really practical at that location. So you have an issue there. It's, it's not a perfect plan. You know, you can always look at a plan and find something, but I tell you, it's, it's great. As far as the timing, students arriving at a different time, all of that gels in and meshes in great. So I like the plan. With the pre-K, that's still kind of being looked at, so, you know, congratulations, it's a great plan you all came up with. A lot of work went into it, I'm sure, so.
And one of the things that also, and I don't think we, we provided it here or that we've mentioned it, is that if our budget goes through, we get that second counselor at LFK, we talked about extended time for that counselor to be over there still serving those students. There is a room there that's available since those are LFK and that, you know, a lot of times your counselors also kind of serve in an administrative capacity as far as support. So not just will Ms. Vaca or Ms. McDonald be spending time over there as well, then they could also have a guidance counselor spending time over there as well, working in that capacity too. So they've put together a pretty thorough plan, I believe, and I appreciate the work that they've all, all done.
I'm on, I'm on board too with the, the middle school option. I talked about that with Mrs. McDonald when I was over there a few weeks ago and asked her a bunch of questions and I think it sounds good. One thing that didn't occur to me to ask about until I saw you sitting here, Mr. Hirsch, is if we do put the fifth grade there, how are those students going to receive services like, you know, OT or ESL even or whatever they may need?
Yeah, great question. We, our occupational therapists, physical therapists, music therapists, whatever, they're, they're itinerant in nature. The only specialist that has their own school is the speech, the speech therapist, but they can travel as well. And we have a specific, we have people assigned to preschool that can deal with that. That won't, that won't take any additional stuff.
So would they use that, that classroom that you just mentioned with the counselor or, I mean, is there just another room?
Yeah, so there, there would be another-
Oh, you mean the OT room at LFK?
No, at, at Warren County Middle School, there, there would be a space-
Plenty of space.
Yeah, they could utilize that space for-
And the teachers just come over and come in.
Yeah, there's plenty of space. I mean, what we would probably have to do, the only thing that just comes out of my mind is we probably just have to install some, maybe an additional changing table or, or two or some, or something, but that, that wouldn't be difficult.
And to have the, from logistical standpoints of just having, you know, security and all the, the requirements and so forth that we have in our school, if we go outside of the school division, we're kind of almost, we're going to have to create that same thing at someone else's property. And that in itself becomes a problem, a challenge, nothing else.
I mean, I feel much better about it now that I see the separation. I hope we can encourage our eighth graders over there to be on their best behavior and not expose these younger children to any of the videoed fights. I, that, that would be a problem for me if they, if the fifth graders start to be desensitized to that type of behavior because they're going to be looking up to these eighth graders. And if they see that, that could change their trajectory through school. So I think we have to have zero tolerance on that.
Yes, we're, that's one thing that we, we did discuss and, you know, that was something that, that Ms. Googler did, did address and talk about. So we did have that conversation.
Anything else for?
No, I think I'm good.
Thank you, guys. I think it sounds like-
This is it.
-a good plan. All right.
Okay, a lot of planning went into it.